Hey, everybody. Welcome to the June 16 City Council Work Session. Welcome to everyone here and at home. And we're now going -- we didn't get to Envision Eugene at our last meeting, so we're going to envision it at this meeting. So, yes. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'll just start off with a couple of thoughts as we talk about this topic. And I'll turn it over to Lisa and Carolyn and let them do a little bit of a presentation. Then we want to get some feedback. But just to set the stage a little bit, you might remember where we've been. We spent, I don't know, 12 or 18 months going through the ECLAP process. And the really outcome of that ECLAP process, and that was a lot of detail, a lot of data, to get to the point of saying, here's the number of acres, here's the types of housing, here's the number of housing units that we're going to need to really meet our 20-year projection on population. A lot of work's been gone into that. At that point, when that came back, what we said is we want to come back to the council in February for council to adopt the UGB. And that's the ultimate outcome. At that, we set up the process and had a timeline to meet that, which, as we've come along, there's been a lot of additional input from people in the community wanting a lot of additional information. And so that additional information that a lot of people want realistically probably would take us longer than February to get there. So what we're doing is we're shifting the conversation to get to the same place where we want to get to as we move into next year. But we want to have a little bit of a different kind of a conversation. We've talked about this, that we really want to avoid the traditional growth, no-growth conversation. And so we've embarked on that. A couple of weeks ago, a couple of you were involved with the Three Days with Bob Chadwick. He and Lisa and her team have been spending a lot of time talking to people in the community. The purpose of that is really to try to get all the various parties to a place, to land in a new spot, meaning we come to an agreement on the UGB as well as infill strategies. And we're able to do that in a timely manner in which we're able to meet your expectations as well as our expectations, as well as the community expectations. So that's where we're headed. There are a couple of different changes in that, and they'll be talking a little bit about that. But we will be asking the council to interact differently than perhaps we've traditionally asked you to do. So, for example, we may be asking to meet for half a day, a couple of times, to really go through some of the information, which is different than having a series of work sessions. We may be asking for the council and the Planning Commission to have some joint workshops to talk about some of these kinds of things. We may be asking to have some joint public hearings as we work through these kinds of things. And so there's a lot of work that still needs to be done, but we're trying to change the way we do that and still come out with a very good outcome at the end. So that's what we're trying to accomplish. The other piece that is probably important is Lisa and her team are going to be spending the vast majority of their time over the next six to eight months on Envision Eugene. And so what that means is, is that they won't have the capacity to add new work to their work plan as we go through this. And I think that's fine. And so I just, but I want to kind of set that expectation, that is, as other projects come up that aren't already kind of on the work plan and in the queue, we may just have to kind of set those in abeyance as we kind of move forward. Of course, we'll always be able to react if there's some things that have a real sense of urgency around those, and we'll have to try to figure out how to do that. So I just want to make sure we set that stage. So with that, I'll turn it over to Lisa to kind of work us through the workshop.
Thanks, John. Good afternoon. I'm Lisa Gardner. At our last work session on Envision Eugene, we talked about public involvement, our scope and timeline. One of the suggestions that came from the council regarding public involvement was that we look into televising our Planning Commission meetings to provide broader accessibility to the public. And I wanted to follow up with you, let you know that beginning June 28, we will be televising those meetings. And for at least the short term, we'll be televising from the McNutt Room and may shift after that. But we'll certainly let people know when and how to find those webcasts and televised meetings. So since our last meeting, you received an email with information about the 50-person community group that met. It was a workshop we held on Envision Eugene. John just talked a little bit about it. We'd like to spend a little bit more time today talking about it and what we think we learned from it and how we want to build that into our approach moving forward. It was a three-day workshop held June 2, 3, and 4, convened by the city manager and was facilitated, as John said, by Bob Chadwick and Diane Seehaver. We invited over 90 people, and the workshop was intended to bring together representatives from diverse interests from across our community. Primary focus of the workshop was building trust, breaking down stereotypes, creating our desired outcomes, and learning, probably most importantly, how to have a different kind of community conversation around land use. We used Chadwick techniques, many of which you're familiar with, having gone through some Chadwick work yourselves. Both large group circles, small group breakouts. And we spent a lot of time, as a group, challenging the stereotypes that we create for each other and our community by first naming and defining those stereotypes. So as examples, stereotypes about developers, environmentalists, conservatives, progressives, planners, city management, which includes not just administrative but also elected officials. And then we spent a considerable amount of time redefining what those should be, what in our sort of perfect world those definitions should be of planners, of community members. And as part of that, we, there was an exercise, several of them that we did, that I thought was really insightful and valuable. And it was the best thing I can describe it as, is the confronting exercise. And so it was a couple of people volunteering. So, for example, and this is purely hypothetical, if I had something to confront John about, I would ask John if he would do this with me. I would lay all the issues that I had on the table directly to John. John would have selected somebody to listen and then tell him what he, what they heard me say. John would then have a chance to respond back to me. Somebody else would be selected to listen to John and tell me what they heard. And so I think that was just such a powerful exercise for a number of reasons. One, in crowd people, and this is a room full of community leaders, to really put themselves out there and be vulnerable, to be candid and honest, to be open to criticism and confrontation. That's a very difficult thing to do in such a real way. Very often, our community confronts each other in letters to the editor and three-minute soundbites at public meetings, but rarely in a face-to-face opportunity where there's a, an opportunity for a back-and-forth and a discourse, and most importantly, a learning. So I think the Chadwick techniques, when you write them down on paper, sound so simple. But I think that they, in bringing together a roomful of leaders, they really are so powerful. They create a synergy and a movement that's both tangible and exciting. And so for me, that was what I saw and took from that. And recognizing that the mayor, Councilor Clark, Ortiz, and Zlanka all spent time at the workshops, I wanted to ask for your comments back to the council on your experience at the workshop.
Well, I'll just make a couple of comments. And that is that I thought, as we all do, when someone says we're all going to be, have some kind of little process together, everybody sort of arrives with a healthy dose of skepticism about what it is they're being invited to participate in, and is this going to be some sort of la-la exercise or something of that sort? So that is brought into the room right from the get-go. And then you just watch as people go through it over time, how they lay that down and begin to see the work as serious and not just some kind of new-agey thing or whatever people's perception was. And so I just watched that transition away from skepticism to seeing the value and actually people becoming very engaged in the process and then investing in it. So I think that all happened. The other thing I would like to point out is that I also think, I want people to know that the, those so-called confrontational exercises were not imposed on people. People voluntarily offered to participate in them because they wanted to see how they would work. And I think people found, and I among them, had to once again go through my skepticism. But I think everybody found them really valuable articulations of some of the issues and how they might get worked through and come out the other side in a better way in the, in the community. So I, from, and at the end of the three days, I'm sure there'll be some more people who will fall off just because of schedule issues, but I was really impressed with across-the-board people's desire to keep on going, that they really, no matter where they came from on the political spectrum, or what part of the community they came from, they really wanted to see if we could get to a different place in our community discussions and had some belief that we were heading in the right direction. I guess I would end up by saying, I think everybody feels this is sort of a take a step at a time and see how it's going kind of process, and where you take a step and then you recheck, and you take a step and you recheck. But I think that's okay, because that is certainly an improvement over the way we have been able to have these kinds of community conversations. So I don't think it is, and I say this because I know we're being listened to by a lot of people, I don't say this is the end-all, be-all, and will be the magic thing that will fix everything that's wrong or make everything perfect. I just think it gives us a better chance of having a really community-building conversation about the future of this community. And people have been longing to have that conversation. So I'm, I'm fully ready to keep going, anything ahead, and seeing how this works out.
Yeah, I would say that for those watching, and for those councillors that weren't there, I would define the, you know, 50 or so people that were in the room as some of the louder voices and the more involved players in the typical kinds of fights, frankly, that we have in our community. And the battle lines start to form just as soon as you want to have a difficult conversation. And everybody, as, as Bob Chadwick would say, begins to imagine their worst outcomes. And it's a popular phrase to say that pessimists often become prophets. And that's kind of the theory here, that once you start to develop your fears and thinking about the worst possible outcomes and garden against it, and those guys over there are awful, and because I don't trust them, I've got to, I've got to beat them. Then what happens is those lines begin to form in a way where you can't find solutions together as easily. And so this session was an opportunity for us to do, to break that down on the philosophical lines that if I feel like you listen to me, maybe I'll trust you just a little bit. And I think that's the, that was what this time was about, was to put those who do some of the loudest fighting and yelling and disagreeing in a room to try and get them to hear each other a little bit better, so that maybe we can trust each other a little bit more and stop focusing on avoiding our worst possible outcomes, to talk more about our best outcomes and how we can achieve those together. And I saw a couple of really interesting things there. There were two people who've served in elected positions who were there, and I'll keep their names out of it. But they have a tendency to disagree on a lot of things. And one of the, and they directly confronted each other about some of this and talked about a lot of it. But at the end of the time, they walked up to the maps on the wall and found that they agreed on about 80, 85% of what decisions were that needed to be made. And only the real problem was to work on the rest of it that remained. And it gave them the space to, to be able to trust each other enough to talk about it and come towards solutions. So I thought it was a really worthwhile process from that experience, or a couple of people in the room that I, I'm going to work hard to give more credit to.
Thank you.
I'm going to work hard to. Couple of select people. Not going to use any names, mind you.
Sorry, Jim.
It's perfectly all right. And I think that, that helps us get to a place where we're pragmatically looking for solutions instead of having simple fights again. And so I'm hopeful that helps this process, too.
Sometimes my sense of humor gets nasty to me. I'm sorry.
Here's my default position, so it's perfectly okay.
Alan.
Geez. I wasn't able to attend the whole thing. Actually, I just got to attend the beginning of it, and then I had work deadlines, so I couldn't attend the rest of it, which is really the guts of it. But I was impressed with how open people were. I was impressed with how many people there were there. That was amazing. I think it was like close to 50 people. And people came and went, as I understand, but it took three days to participate in this, which is very impressive to be able to do and pull off. And it shows how committed people are in this community to this, to this dialogue. And one of the things I learned long ago in my career is that when people are asked to participate and asked their opinion in a context that actually has meaning, they're more than willing to participate. But they're not willing to participate in a process that, that won't result in anything. And I think one of the participants had gone, it's an interesting story about, I think, the value of this process. One of the participants had gone to one of the early listening sessions of Bob Chadwick and said, and came up to me and said, "How much are you paying this guy, and what is he supposed to do?" And after this process, three-day process was going, was a 180 on that, saying, "This was amazing. This guy is brilliant, and this is the best thing that could have happened, because now we're all kind of ready to move forward," and felt very, very encouraged. So that was, that was really telling for me. I think the outcome of this was that, is that you build trust, as Mike said, but, and that you could create this space for a conversation and dialogue to occur that would be the basis for agreement as we move forward. So I really like where we're going with this in that regard. One of the things I also learned early on is that, and what gets reinforced by the stuff that Bob Chadwick does, which is that more than anything, people want to be respected. And in order to be respected, you have to listen and you have to hear. And that's what that was all about. And so when people had that chance in those confrontations, set up to do that, so that it creates that kind of respect, trust, ability to have a conversation, dialogue. So it wasn't, we weren't supposed to solve the urban growth boundary issue in that meeting. We're just supposed, it's kind of the framework.
Ready.
Yeah, to get ready to move forward. And I think it was really valuable in that regard. As we move forward, though, I hope that all the councillors can participate in the different aspects of it.
Andrew.
So I also wasn't able to attend all three days. I went the first day, and I agree with everything that's been set up to here with, you know, the fact that this is really a good exercise. It's really good for us to get together in a room with people who have opposing opinions and actually give them an opportunity to have a conversation. I like the fact that we're using Chadwick. The money part, I don't know how much we're paying him, and it's probably better, we don't know. But, you know, and I'm not, I don't want to be perceived as one of those naysayers, but, you know, my challenge is I look around the room, and the day that I was there, I was the only person of color, which, you know, okay, that's fine. But with me not there, I don't know if there was anybody else who came the second days. And then I really didn't see anybody who couldn't afford to take time off work to be there. And so, you know, and Bob Chadwick made this comment about, well, these are, the universe made it the right way, or something around the universe being that these are the people that, you know, that are interested or count. And I really take offense to those kinds of statements, because there are a whole slew of people out in the community who can't afford to go through these processes. And I mean, I really am thankful for the people that did. I'm not trying to take away anything from what, you know, the amount of time that people, you know, gave up their work, you know. But they still do have work to go back to. There are people who work jobs, if they took a day off, they would lose their jobs, you know, let alone, you know. So I, I just, you know, I was really challenged kind of by that. And I was challenged with the fact that I couldn't be there all three days. And so I was kind of like not really, really happy about the fact that I couldn't participate the other days, because I had to also work. And there was another commitment that, that I had committed to previously. So, but I'm really looking forward to the information. I mean, I really hope that we get a good product from this, and that this is a tool that we're using to go through this process. I know we're going to get the information that we need. And it sounds like I missed something that was probably a sentinel event, and I, and I'm sorry that I wasn't there. But I do really think that any time people can spend time talking to each other in a face-to-face and kind of demystify each other's belief about each other, I don't know where we can go wrong with that kind of a process.
Chris.
Thank you. I think you make an absolutely great point. It's plagued researchers forever as to how to reach everybody you want to reach. I think it's something that requires a lot of, a lot of thought in other forms. For me, what's significant here relates to, here comes the metaphor. And it's not really mine. It was one that my colleague loves to talk about, is your future could be like a car where you take your hands off the wheel and it just goes wherever it's going to go. Or you can put your hands on the wheel and actually steer it. And that's where knowing your destination, knowing where you want to go, really controls whether or not you steer it. Where that relates to us is, one, if we don't have an agreement on the destination, then we don't know whether we should steer or not steer. The other problem I think that this really gets directly at is that for many years, two different people were trying to steer, and that each side was trying to pull the other side's hands off the wheel because they didn't like where they were trying to steer to. And there would even be some folks who would say, "I'd rather have nobody steer than have you steer," because of the perception that where they wanted to go was an absolutely wrong destination. And then what would happen is, if everybody's pulling their hands off the wheel when you hit the tree, each side blames the other side for having hit the tree. This is a process to try to completely short-circuit that and get rid of it. And I think it has to start with, okay, where are we going? Let's first do that, because I'm going to be less inclined to want to pull your hand off the wheel if I think you're going to at least the same place where I'm going to. We have debated so long, or not, we debated so long about the steering, and we've spent so little time talking about where we're going, that I think that's set us up for failure. And some folks don't want to talk about the destination because they're so convinced their destination's right, they don't want to talk about that. Envision Eugene, being an outgrowth of ECLAP, the conversation was, if we leave our hands off the wheel, we're going to need this many acres. Do we want to put our hands on the wheel? If we do, that's going to influence the number of acres. It's going to influence what our future looks like. Let's start talking about it. So for some folks, that's real touchy-feely. And I understand that they think it's an absolute profound waste of time to do touchy-feely conversations, just give me the wheel, let me steer, and I'll take you to the right place. That paradigm doesn't work anymore. We have to start figuring out a way to get there together. And maybe the city of Eugene is actually the chauffeur in this whole deal, where we say, "Let us be the chauffeur to get us to the right destination." To me, that metaphor really makes it clear on why we're doing this, because I think some folks can question, "Why are you doing this?" And Bob Chadwick does a great job, once you're in the meeting, but to all those 129,550 people that weren't there, you need to still be able to explain why this is an important thing to do. I believe you need to have the hands on the wheel. I think you've got to decide what your destination is. It's been way too long since we've been doing that, and this process, I think, is, is a good start.
Just one more thing before I turn it back to you guys. I know we don't, we, we have to try to have this in a timely enough fashion, and that's what we're working on, having it really do what everybody talked about, but have it done in a timely enough way. And that's a, that's a, that's a tension and a challenge that we'll be facing all the way along. But I did want to also point out that in some sense, it will always be an iterative process, because there will be people who've been on part of the journey and haven't been on it all along, and we're going to have to find ways to keep folding people into the process as we go along. When we started out on this one, there was a person in the room who said, "Well, I've been in," I think it was, he's been in the, some of the roundtable discussions, been in some of the West, the WEC, the West European Collaborative Discussions, "I know how to do this. I don't, I think we should just start and go." And, and I think they learned that, no, you actually have very few people who are at that place, and so you need to be willing and ready to let other people get on board and, and kind of work their way through the process, too. So I don't know how we kind of remain open to do that. We're trying to create a lot of venues for people to, to participate. And it won't be perfect, because that is just not possible. But we're going to try to be as perfect as we can as we go about this, because I do think we have a shared intention that this gets us to a better place and in a better way than we've been able to do to, to this point. So back to you.
What kind of call would we try?
Thanks. So your packet includes information following up on the May work session about timeline and scope and approach. We are prepared to discuss that today or answer any questions you have, but I think really we want to shift the focus more to leveraging the synergy and momentum coming out of that workshop and try to see if we can't look at things a little bit differently, at least over the next couple of months. As we've mentioned, there was considerable knowledge and expertise and leadership in that workshop. And at the end of that, going around the room, there were stated commitments by the participants to being part of the solution, to working towards best outcomes, to not be focusing and opposing just their worst fears. And one participant even said that their personal commitment was going to be not just to not be silent when, when he hears people perpetuating stereotypes, but to actually defend the people that, that he now has a better understanding of than he had in the past. And so it was sort of really breaking down those stereotypes and having some ownership over not allowing our community to continue having those kinds of conversations. And so to, to be not just advocating for, but defending people and say, "No, I know that person," or, "I don't know that person. Let's invite them down and sit down and have a cup of coffee and talk about that." And so I think there were some real personal commitments made by the participants. Typically, the summer months are a very quiet time for us in terms of doing active, broad public participation. People take vacations. It's a difficult time to get folks together. We think it's a good opportunity to try to work intensively with the group and subsets of this group, to see if we can't make some real progress in identifying project components, data needs, trying to put together a scenario that we can then take back to the community in the fall, the broader community. We may need to expand the group for representation, and we invite you to let us know if there's anybody that you think, either individual or a group, that, that we need to, to bring into the fold. I think we can also, as we bring people together, try to sort of have opportunities for all of the council to participate in some aspect, just being mindful of the quorum. But there's still room to bring folks in and just being, paying attention to that. You were sent a list of participants, so if you get a chance to look at that, I think you got it in the email last Friday, I'd be happy to resend it if you don't have it. And then let us know who, who else you might add to that. We're really hopeful that we can use this momentum to get farther faster. And I'm going to let Carolyn talk a little bit more about where we're going to go from here.
I'm Carolyn Weiss. And as, as you've heard, this community group is really excited to work together. They have shown a commitment to help us with this project, and they have a tremendous amount of expertise and experience that is really valuable to this work. And we may need to expand that group, but we do believe that over the next two to three months, we can work with this group to refine the data that we have and need, to narrow down our options, and to hone in on a draft scenario for how Eugene may grow in the future. As Lisa pointed out, that is actually good timing for us if going into the fall, we can start back up with our public workshops and our broad community engagement to get some feedback on the work that we've done over the summer. So we'll have something for folks to respond to. The work with the broader community still needs to continue. I want to talk just briefly about three primary elements to this approach that we think are kind of foundational. The first one that we've all been talking about is community consensus, and that's just a pillar of this approach. And as, as Councilor Clark said, we think there's a lot more common ground out there than, than people have thought in the past. And so we can really explore that common ground and get much further down the road. Secondly, technical analysis. This work needs to be grounded as well. We have many different sources of information that we can use to build on this work. So we have existing information and data. We have a tremendous amount of it, actually. And right now, staff are working to put it into maps and different kinds of reports so that that information is accessible and actually gets us further down the road and is actually productive. We're also working with our consultant, Echo Northwest, for continuing that work, and they're providing us with some basic analysis that will help us evaluate the options that are in front of us. So we're, we're continuing that work. We've also already talked about the amount of expertise and experience that we have in the community group that can help us move forward. And then we know we'll reach a point where we need more data collection, and that's kind of what we call the just-in-time analysis. Well, when we find out what that is, by all means, we will, we will get that done. So that just-in-time analysis is really part of a larger group of information and data that, that we have access to. And then finally, we have talked a lot around this table about the, the concern we have with pinpointing some point 20 years from now and thinking that's where we're going to end up. It's the jaws of uncertainty discussion. And so we are currently having conversations with the state to understand just how much flexibility can we build into this plan? What are they comfortable with? And then in addition to that, we can certainly, as a local body, commit to having reoccurring check-ins to look at the assumptions and see if they are, still play out and are responding to what we're seeing on the ground. to what we're seeing on the ground. So we can move forward with that, for sure. So in general, this approach is about retaining flexibility, adapting to different issues that come up as we move through the process. If for some reason this approach isn't getting us where we feel we need to be, we can always go back to a more conventional approach, and we think this time will still be valued and time well spent. But really, we think that, as Lisa said, we can get further down the road and to a better place with this approach. And finally, I just want to say, we also want to include our regional planning partners, specifically the county, in this process, as well as the state. And by having that, that collaboration in the process, we believe we can have an expedited legal adoption process once we finally get to an adoption. So we think this approach is the best opportunity we have for an expedited process in reaching our community's best outcomes.
Thank you. Thank you. So I have Alan and Mike in the queue, and before that, I would just like to, I'd like to know how, it seems to me, we really, I heard you talk about the joint meetings with the Planning Commission, and I know we have members from the Human Rights Commission and the Sustainability Commission that participate, but I want to be sure that we're utilizing them as commissions to make use of what they can do to help with this, move this along. Some higher level of them working as a body to help us, bodies to help us work with, do this. And I've talked to the city manager about this, but I'll just mention it today. I know that Thousand Friends is becoming more active in this area, and I know they really participated heavily in the Portland planning processes. So in my view, we're much better inviting them in early and getting them to fully participate as part of the solution right now. So I just would encourage us to get them into play, because I know they're in discussion out there, and I think we want them in here, working with us on it.
Good idea.
Okay, Alan.
So, I understand where we were going before, which was the traditional method, which is walking down this path and then having all these different, like we had 13 different issues that we wanted to address and incorporate into this process. And we were going to kind of pick them off simultaneously, but as much as we could, and work through those things, which meant that we need to get a lot of analysis into the, and front load it. Now we're kind of shifting to this alternative approach, which is working through this group to help craft a vision about where we want to go, and then have just-in-time analysis come into that process so that we can inform the discussion. Where the part that I didn't quite get is, is so in this traditional approach, I was on board with the 13 things, I'm just wondering how those 13 things still get incorporated into this alternative approach.
Well, and I think I can answer maybe more generally, I don't know if Karen will have anything more specific to offer, but I think, you know, probably what's going to happen is we're going to spend the next couple of months figuring out, what do we know? What do we know about where we think we want to go? And so it's that, rather than the front loading the analysis, as you talk about, it's having more conversations about more tangible things, but not necessarily empirically backed. Then we do more of the analysis. So I think probably what happens is in September, we go back and take a look at that and see, do we need to revise what our, you know, like, how do we incorporate? Our work plan probably gets reworked, basically in September, based on the progress we've made this summer. And so I think, I don't have a, you know, I can't rattle off those 13 things, but I think that some of those, some of those will have been addressed by this group and by the staff as we move forward, and some of those won't. I think ultimately, we need to be able to answer those questions when we're done. So reworking that sort of scope and timing in September, I think, is probably where we'll end up. And I don't know if Karen will have anything?
I'll just add a little bit to that. Items one through five, we're definitely doing, we're legally required to do those, so those will be a part of the work.
Right.
The remaining items, we think that will be brought up through the community group process, because it's a diverse enough group that most, if not all, of these issues have a proponent within that group. And so we think that they will be kind of brought up as an issue that needs to be addressed throughout that. And then we'll figure out what's the best way to get that done in the quickest amount of time.
Yeah, I guess, just as a safeguard, I think you're probably right. But as a safeguard, I think this would be a good thing to provide to that group so that if they don't, we can say, "This one still needs to be addressed."
Mm-hmm.
And make sure that, you know, number 11, or whatever, gets addressed within this process.
Mike?
Yeah, I appreciate all the work that you guys are committing to and have done. I remember during the process of our retreat there mentioning the idea of bringing in the county as something that was important to me. And I want to emphasize again, that I think that's critical here, that early and often we're checking in with county commissioners and looking at their concerns. Now, I may not agree with some of them, but this is a process where if they're not a part of the discussion and they choose to sit outside, it can certainly create, you know, we can have a wonderful conversation that's real participatory, and we can have a wonderful transparent, kind of goodwill conversation that goes on in Eugene and everybody working towards the best pragmatic end and have it run off the rails at the end, if we're not careful. I'm entirely in favor of the idea of building a process that allows us to check back in after our February timeline goal as we go along, not just in the short term, but in the long term. How do we do something that's a hybrid of periodic review, that's special and specific to our area, that suits and fits us? The kind of thing that allows us to say, "Well, here's what we're planning for, but this is important to us, and a lot of us care pretty deeply, so we're going to keep checking in in a very formalized way and maybe even lead the state in some kind of new process that allows for more intelligent and less conflict-oriented planning about this sort of thing." But I will say, put in the Chadwick sort of process to attest here, I guess I would share that my worst outcome, my very, very worst outcome, is that we end up adding tasks that are mandatory that blow our agreed-to timeline. That's my very worst outcome. I think it's critically important, not just because we've made a unanimous agreement in the past to do this, but because I think some of the products of the work that we're going to do are going to be critically important as some of the challenges that face the county in the next couple of years come up. These guys are going to lose $14 to $17 million in the next budget year, and they're going to lose another $15 million budget year after that. That's nearly half the county's general fund in the next couple of years. And I don't know anyone who knows where that money's getting made up. So we have to have a plan in place for how we're going to help our local economy, because I think that's the only way we're going to address some of those concerns and be able to take care of the things we need to here. So I, for me, having this drag out too long is going to put us in a very dangerous position, in my opinion. And I want to see us build something new as a best outcome instead.
Dangerous, what do you mean?
From a public safety standpoint, I think, and I'd be happy to take another round, Mayor, but I, if you blow half the budget-
I'll be glad to give you another round.
All right, thank you. I'll be happy to answer that. It's a little while.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Thanks.
Carolyn, I heard you say that of those first five items, that they will get addressed
because it's a state requirement. But of six through 13, what if the group can't come to an agreement on that? Does the whole process stop until they can? And I saw in some of the materials that you sent out that the group wants 100% consensus, is that correct? Are they committed to it? I think that was on their sheet of statements.
Oh, we did include the best out, list of best outcomes, and I don't know that 100% was agreed to by the whole group, but it was expressed by at least a member of the group.
I think that was one of those statements where everyone's statements were woven together into a collective statement.
Correct.
So that would have been one person's expressed best outcome.
Mm-hmm. Well, if any of the items six through 13, if you can't get consensus on those, does the whole process come to a stop while we get more data and go out for more review? And I'm just, I'm feeling like this is continuing to drag on and on in that there, we're building in more opportunities to slow the process down, and it's a little frustrating. I realize that you guys will all be making these decisions once I'm gone, but I, and I guess my other concern is, when I was reading the materials the other night, I started feeling to me like this was Crest Drive all over again, that this group, this group that you've been working with, they are not going to own this. The final decision is up to the city council. And I feel like we abdicated our authority on Crest Drive, and I just want to make sure that they understand at the beginning that, well, I don't know, maybe that, maybe this group wants to do that again, give all the authority to the group. But I hope that we don't, and that they understand that they aren't driving the bus, so to speak. Because really, the buck stops here.
And I just want to let you know that that was actually expressly stated upfront by Bob Chadwick as part of the group, letting the folks know, they are not the decision-makers. The council, the county are the decision-makers in this process. And we're not actually proposing, as was the case in Crest, a 100% consensus model. Again, this isn't a decision-making body. The idea is that we have consensus-building process, that we figure out where we have agreement, and what we can let go of, and what we can agree to, and where we can have something that we can move forward with. And so it's a concept and a framework. It's not a specific process where we're going to do the five fourth, you know, and it's not a decision-making body. So just to reassure you that that was expressly made clear, we see this group as a resource to work with. They're sort of like a brain trust or a community, I mean, it's a resource for us to work with as opposed to a decision-making model, where they're embedded in the model.
And just one other comment. I had somebody out in the community, wasn't a part of the group the other day, mentioned to me that, "Oh, we'll go through a two- to three-year process, and then we'll just litigate it for another five years." And I mentioned, I said, "That's not the model we're going to adopt," and that, "We're not going to do that." And so I think part of it is, it's, part of it is, how can we have a, if we disagree on some stuff, just because we disagree doesn't mean people automatically stop the process or will litigate it. And it's partly, how do we get to the point where hopefully everybody agrees, but if they don't, that at least people feel like they have been heard, respected, understood? They may not have got their, what they wanted, but they're okay moving it forward. And so that's really part of what this is all about, too. So if we had 155,000 people all saying yes, that would be ideal, but, you know, that's obviously not going to happen. But it's not about, we're just going to stop and back up and regroup and collect lots more data and analyze data to death, and then add another 18 years to the process so we can all litigate it at the end. So that's not the intent at all. We want to keep it moving very expeditiously, get people to where we can have some really good conversations and try to land in a new place that people can feel okay with, even if that may not be their absolute best outcome from them on the ground. So.
But in the end, the mayor mentioned Thousand Friends, I'll just use them as an example. But let's say they do participate in the process, and in the end, they litigate. Can we, I think I know the answer to this, but can we prevent that ahead of time? You can't-
No.
-stop somebody from litigating, but-
Right.
-that would be an awfully bad faith for them to go through the process and then-
And so part of that, I think, is, is, at the end of the day, people will choose, or groups will choose to do what they want to do. Some will say, "Absolutely, we're okay with it." Some may say, "You know what, we're just going to go litigate this." The idea is, is to involve folks into the conversation so they don't feel the need to do that at the end of the day. And I think that's part of what the whole process is. It doesn't guarantee that somebody's not going to go out to do that, but it wouldn't guarantee it if we did any other way, either.
Right.
So it's to try to, and I don't want to leave people the expectation that this is just sort of easy to get to the place where we're asking to get to.
No.
It's going to be a lot of work, a lot of different ways for us to sort of operate also, but we're going to give it our absolute best shot to try to get there. So when a recommendation comes to you, that we're giving you our best recommendation based on all the conversations that we've had, some of which some people may not agree with, and then you'll all weigh in on that and make the final decision, so.
All right, thank you.
George?
Thank you. Yeah, my concern is, you know, we've got seven months to go. We're making this decision in February, I guess, is that correct, our first decision?
We're still moving towards that.
Yeah, ideally, otherwise we may have to delay it, I suppose. I don't know. I'm all for, you know, I'd rather have facts than consensus, I guess. I'm one of those factual guys, rather than spend three days and enormous amount of money and time with all those people and staff time and counselors were there to build consensus. I don't know, I'd almost wish that there'd been, I'd rather see technical analysis of stuff that we need to know about all of these items here so that we can make our decision. I'm not saying, no, no, that elite opinion that was formed, that's a very elite group, they do have expertise. They sure do. But I also agree with Counselor Ortiz, that there's like enormous groups that have been left out, and hopefully there would be some way their opinions could be included. And Counselor Solomon's correct, that the final decision is ours. And so I'm really more of a fact guy than feelings and opinions, so. And I'd like to see some of, at least some of the things from the blue group here from six through 13 included also. Thank you.
Betty?
I had some questions, but I now have a comment, I don't, about litigation. I think no matter what we decide, I, you know, we have made decisions and home builders have appealed them, and they never got settled. And I don't think we can do anything to stop that sort of thing. I, well, one question is, you say you talk to the state, when you talk to the state, what does that mean? Who is the state? What people? What department?
Uh, sorry, it's DLCD, which is the Department of Land Conservation and Development is who we work with.
Okay, I know, yeah. But, so, they're the ones who decide whether we-
They are, and we have a regional representative who we have regular conversations with. And then we actually are planning a trip up to Salem to meet with a larger group of folks in the department to-
They came here to meet last year, didn't they?
Yes.
Yeah. I was there, okay. Who's the regional person?
Ed Moore is his name.
We have ongoing conversations with Richard Whitman, who's the director.
I'm concerned that we have to have, that we don't have some, I'm sure we have people on staff who could facilitate meetings, if you want to have all-day meetings. I'm very skeptical about these all-day meetings, but I don't know why we have to bring in some guru from some other place. Also, for the technical analysis, I would think we'd have some staff people who have technical abilities. And I guess, I guess, oh, I guess that's it for now, but I, I think, I know people will feel good after they get together and talk to each other and listen to each other. I've done that with high school classes. This stuff is stuff that I was using back in the 60s, I think, that, and I think it has some value, but I don't know that it has value about getting through to everybody or getting someplace. Also, my other big question is, I took part in the growth management, Eugene Decisions and Growth Management meetings, which went on forever, and there was huge participation. People sent in forms, and people went to meetings. There was a much broader participation than you're going to get now, I think, because I think there's not the money available to bring people together, though maybe there is, if you use it differently. But what's happened to the growth management policies? Are we saying that they're no longer valid?
I'm sure.
I mean, we did get those together, it seems to me that that covers pretty much what you're talking about. And do you think people have no longer support those, or we no longer support them, or why do we need a new process?
I think we're actually assuming the growth management policies are very much valid, and in fact, they're reflected in what we've developed for the guiding principles, which we shared with you, I believe, at the May meeting. And so including that are also much of the work we've done through Eugene Council and other recent work. And those are guiding principles for determining specific direction around the land use and the urban growth boundary. So they're policies that we will continue to reflect in framing where we go, so, but I mean, we're not, the outcome of this process isn't to have new policies, urban growth policies, it's to have a specific urban growth boundary, which may include some policy shifts, or code shifts, or metroplan change- some policy shifts or code shifts or metro plan changes, but that, we're assuming that those policies are very much valid and included in our process.
I, I really don't see the need for a lot of the process. Thank you.
We are out of time. We want to get into our process meeting. Mike's got one more comment he wanted to make. The only one thing I, I recognize is that people who are, have the most angst about this are, are those who haven't had as much time in, in the participation. And so, it's, and everybody I know had that same kind of angst when they started, so I, I understand that perfectly. Only thing I can call you to is that we have all kinds of advisory groups that we try to, for different purposes, listen to. And this is, in, in essence, just a different form of trying to get some, a broader advisory group to come and give you their best thinking for you to make your decisions when it gets to be time for you to make your decision. And they're hoping through their process, they can help inform you better of what the community would like to have, happen. Mike, you're next, and then we're going to go on to our next...
I need to say something else.
Thank you. I just want to be real quick and show this to people, and Alan was kind enough to bring it up on his computer. This is a graph of the...
Because your Apple didn't work.
This is a graph of rural schools' county timber payments, and this is this year. That's next budget year, and that's the next budget year after that. If rural schools' bill isn't reauthorized, it's between, it's about 15 million next budget year and about 15 million the year after that, which means their general fund loses about $30 million over the next couple of years. It's about a $75 million general fund at the county, about three-quarters of which is the jail and the sheriff's department. So, if they lose half of their general fund in the course of the next couple of years, I don't think that it's going to be reauthorized at the federal level. I don't think the state's riding to the rescue and we haven't shown in our community any history of wanting to supplant those revenues locally. So, when Alan asks, "Why do I think this means we, it's important to keep us safe?" Because I think there are going to, there's going to come a time in the next couple of years where this, at the city level, we may have, we may be presented with some of the questions and some of the challenges that will come and roll downhill from what's happening at the county level, and I think we need to be prepared for it. And so, I'm, I'll have a work session poll request on this issue later, after thinking about it some more. But I think that making sure this work is done in a timely way is critically important so we can begin to think about what happens if there are some fundamental, large-scale changes at the county, which I think are coming.
Okay, I'd like, I'd like to move us on now, if everybody's ready.
I want, I have a last word.
Yes, have the last word, Betty.
The problem with saying an advisory committee, if they do a lot of work, we've had this experience before, then they expect you to accept what they recommend.
Expect you to listen, I think.
They expect us to accept. And another thing, a person who in the past has been on many advisory committees just asked me, "Are you doing any better at listening to minority opinions from committees?" And I think that's really important, that frequently we have it. We said the advise, we say, "The advisory committee said this," and there may be three or four people, and they may be some of the most thoughtful people, who are not listened, whose opinions do not come to us.
Thank you. All right. We're ready to move on to the next item on our agenda, which is our process session. And I just say at the beginning, because we have, what, 36 minutes to do whatever we're going to get done today, we'll get started on it and then we'll do part two if we, to finish up, if that's necessary.
Should we just start from the top of the list?
Yep.
So, the first, first item on the list is time for more detailed committee reports. And if you want to refer to your packet, there's a, a list of your committee assignments on page 121 of your packet. And currently, committee reports happen on the second and fourth Mondays of the month. This was Counselor Zelenka's item.
So, the, as I recall, Counselor Zelenka, the idea of this was that we thought we needed more time for, that would be programmed into our schedule, where you could give a more in-depth information to the council about what's going on in, in the committee that you are participating in. Is that about it?
Yeah. We all participate in these committees and, and the folks that are, and we go off and we do these things, but we only have three minutes every other meeting to talk about all the things we want to talk about, and we never get to any of the substance that's happening in these committee meetings. And they're all very important, otherwise we wouldn't be doing them, period. And so, my thought was to institutionalize some time every once in a while where we actually spent some time, and maybe scatter that out through, through, through the year, where we actually spend some time talking about what's happening at each of these different committees. And one of the things we changed before was, we had, we had more than just the annual report where we had the committee come and talk to us once a year and we review their work plan, and they come back to us at the end of the year and say, "Here's what we did. Here's our new work plan." So, we're stretching that out some more, getting more information. But I think it's important to have our perspectives at this table and talk about what we're doing at these different places, because I think that's important. So, the, the thought is to institutionalize it.
Andrea?
Well, I don't, I, I think it's a good idea. I know it's hard for us when we want to share with our community at our three-minute window that we have, the things that we were out in the community doing, because I think people expect that of us, when we go somewhere, we talk to a group, or when we go and participate in something, plus to talk about our communities. So, I, I think it'd be a good idea. I don't know that it needs to be as full as that, five minutes at our, at those things, you know, like if four of us took five more minutes at the beginning of our, of our work sessions and, you know, moved it on from there, I don't know. I, I don't know that I'd want to take more time out of the queue as far as like our 45-minute windows that we do our work sessions on, to like save one of those every three months, you know? Because I think that there's things that happen consistently that I, you know, like with El Rapa, I think it's very controversial. I want you guys to know what's going on there. I, I feel like, you know, I need to keep you guys up to date with it as much as possible because I think it's really important to me. And same with the Police Commission, same with the Human Rights Commission, same with HSC, all these different things are really important. And so, I think that as opposed to taking it out and expecting it like every third month or something, I would like to just see five minutes added, if we need it, if we want it, to a work session at the beginning, you know, like every other week when we do it, like, and rotate back and forth. You know, like, not all of us can have to do it at the same time.
I guess my feeling about it is that one of the things we never get to do very often is give very good direction back to the committees that you participate in, that come from the body as a whole. And so, you give reports about whatever's going on in your, your committee, but we don't actually have any time to sort of sit and talk about that committee and, and what we would like to have as a, as a council, what happened in that committee from our representative. And that, I, I think a little more time to talk about what's going on in a particular committee would give you the opportunity to really transfer some valuable information for your representative to take back into that committee. Chris?
Yeah, actually, I, I really like the idea. I think it's good to be able to have a more well-fleshed-out understanding of what's happening in the committee, that, well, we do participate in, that's a worthwhile thing. For me, it's figuring out what's the mechanism to do it. So, I think it's a good, it's what we want to get to. I just want to figure out an effective way to do it so that if there's really nothing to report...
You don't bother.
That you don't just do it just to do it. Sometimes the work you're doing is relatively mechanical. There are frequently either controversial or guidance-required kinds of issues where you really do want to do that. So, for me, I think if we can spend some time thinking about the mechanism for doing it, I think that's time well spent. I, I do. I think it's a worthwhile thing to do.
Mike?
Well, Chris, again, as he sometimes does, covered what I was going to say pretty effectively there. I, I was wondering how we create some 36-hour days so that we can just have some more time to see at some of these issues. But I think that the structure we have in place is, is fairly effective. I think perhaps if we added some amount of time to items, we would have the opportunity of, for more thoroughly thought-out sorts of reports at items, and the opportunity to then maybe do another round after that to give feedback to what someone may have said about a particular committee's report, but we're just taking time from other work. So, I'm, I'm not exactly sure how to fix this one, but I, I could see the value in very select circumstances where checking in with the body as a whole on some piece of business being done at the committee level would be valuable to the committee. But I, again, it's about the process. I'm not sure how you do that.
Betty?
Well, I'm, first, I'm glad that you're now bringing things from MPC to, before the final decision's made. I think that's a good thing. It's something I advocated for back when I was on MPC, but I think when there's, if there's something, big decision to be made in your committee and you know it ahead of time, it would be good to bring it up, and not that you necessarily do what this body says, not that they would vote, but we could express opinions, which might guide your decision-making. And an idea I had, which I, I don't even know if I support this or not, but it might be good to have people from the Workforce Partnership, for example, have the director of that come here and speak to us briefly at some point and tell us to describe the work they do and give people a chance to ask questions. And McKenzie Watershed Council, those happen to be two things I'm doing right now, but, and El Rapa, I don't think, he's never been here, has he?
Merlin?
Merlin, huh?
Yeah, mine has been here.
A long time ago. Anyway, to have, maybe if the, and I don't know if, if we have time for this or not, but it might be a good thing to give, you'd have to have time limits, obviously. You know, would you come out in the middle of the day and, or the, in the middle of the afternoon and speak to us for 10 minutes only and then answer questions?
Thanks. Alan?
I, I, two, two purposes for this. One is to inform the rest of us of what's going on in, in the committees, which I think is valuable. That doesn't take very much time. But then there's another one, which is sometimes there's substantive issues that need to be discussed at this table that we don't have structurally time to do that. And those two things, I think, can actually be treated differently. I kind of like the idea, I, the, the first way I thought of it was to, every once in a while, schedule 45 minutes of our, half of our work session time and, and have that be, the ability to do that and talk about committee stuff. The other, I like the idea of tacking on a couple of minutes and rotating it around so that people can get a better feel of what's going on in each of the different committees, because you can't do it in the three minutes, clearly. I mean, maybe, you know, every, every, every time we do that, maybe one councillor takes on, I think it's 10 minutes about the stuff that they're doing in their committees. And that doesn't take a lot of time, but that keeps us informed. And then as the issues pop up, then they can be in, as a work session, potentially.
Andrea?
Well, I was wondering if we could, if staff could create some kind of a template for us to help us, you know, since you're asking us, help, help us kind of know what is a priority, what would, what would rise to the level of that conversation to be bringing it back to council? And I don't know what it would look like, but I'm just curious, because, you know, I think that there's, there's times where I think, "Well, is this of importance and I don't know if I should mention it or not," and I don't. But there was some, some kind of a, I don't know if it would be a form or something that would help us kind of look at those ideas for us to take notes at, and then we can review them and decide whether or not we want to bring them back. I, I don't know if you have any ideas of what that would look like.
No, other than, we got to about the same place you did, but we could certainly work on that.
I mean, because in that, and have it available to us, you know, you don't have to, you know, just create it and then just leave it there, and then if we want to use it or not, that's up to us. But I think it might help us, you know, jog our memory to, to realize, you know, what it is that, that would bring, be bringing that kind of a, an event. I know, my personal opinion, you know, like with the Human Rights Commission, some of those descending conversations that have come to our plate recently, it would have been nice to know ahead of time that those were happening or within the Police Commission, you know, some of the issues around the use of force. I mean, if there was this little trigger mechanism or a form that they could, that those particular councillors could use, in myself with El Rapa, I mean, we go through such a, such a huge up and down within El Rapa alone, you know, I could definitely use some help trying to figure out what's the most important thing there. But something along that line that would help us kind of keep track of those and then like help us reflect whether or not, you know, we want to move forward or not.
Yeah.
Well, just for me, you know, when I think about, when Jennifer and I are on the Human Services Commission, there is a pretty big conversation going on there about possible measure to put on the ballot at some point, and, and we probably ought to be having a little bit more of an ongoing discussion about that, and we just don't have a, a place until we get to the decision-making point. We don't have a place to really talk about that. The other thing that I can think of is with the Metro Partnership, as we talk about economic development, are there particular messages that we would like to send over from the, from the council in that direction? Doesn't mean, that doesn't have to be crisis-driven, and it doesn't have to be because you think something's wrong. It could be that you make a point of, "We would like that particular committee or commission to know that these are things we're concerned about and we would like some attention paid to it," because I think that's the power that you, as a body, can have through your member.
Meeting bonds.
Yeah, yeah. And I just think we're missing, I think we're missing that whole opportunity. And I, and I think it's a big op, I think it's, it's big and important, so I just would like you to really think about that. I think we get the, we're doing really good at getting the message back.
Just sticking.
It's getting, it's getting the message from here out, out to those bodies that I, that shows our intention as a, as a council that I'm more concerned about.
Two-way, yeah.
Yeah. So, just, I'll for you to think about that, because I, I think, if you think about every committee you serve on, there are some fairly substantial things that we all care about that we would like to convey in terms of the work that's being done on those committees or commissions. And they are about furthering council goals. So, and I know that staff does that, but I just think there are times when a stronger voice from us would be helpful, yeah.
I, I think that would actually be helpful as well, so that if some of us have different feelings than the whole body might have, or the majority might have, about a piece of business being conducted by one of the subcommittees, that they don't get the wrong idea that a councillor who may not be the liaison speaks for a majority if they give them some information. So, I think that formalized process may, may help with that.
Okay. Do you have enough information on that one?
Yep. We have not to get going.
And go on to number two?
Number two. Postponing action or work session items at councillors' request. Councillors Pryor and Zelenka posed this. And again, in your packet on page 131, there's some provisions in your working agreements about this. Any councillor may request an item be postponed to another meeting if he or she's unable to attend the meeting at which the item has been scheduled. And as a courtesy, councillors should submit in writing a, a request to postpone to the mayor as early as possible. It goes on from there. And so, there have been some bumps in recent months, and you wanted to discuss this.
Counselor Pryor?
My interest in, in talking about this is so that it avoids confusion. When we talk about having a courtesy or a tradition, those are great until you have a problem, and then suddenly they don't work anymore. And I think that, some of us think there's been a tradition that goes one way, and some of us think there's been a tradition that goes the other way. And since it's never been written down or defined, what we think the tradition is, is ultimately what, what we think it is. And so, that's why I want to spend a little bit of time going beyond just what we think it is and actually nailing something down. For me, the interest is also moving the business of the city forward. We all have to go different places, and sometimes we can be here and sometimes we can't. The question for me is, what is the degree to which a councillor's inability to be here, whether voluntary or involuntary, should slow down the visiting of the city? And I think there may have been a time when it wasn't really a problem. Things weren't time-sensitive, it was okay to provide that, and I think we're moving to the point where sometimes decisions are important, sometimes decisions have to be made, and they need to be made within a certain timeframe. Other times, people expect us to make decisions, they don't expect us to defer things. I think there's also other times where it would be possible for, for a councillor to participate in the meeting even if they're not physically here. I mean, there's a telephone thing there because George was ready to participate before he got here. Alan's been really good when he traveled about, you know, being on the phone. Many of us have tried to do it. Sometimes the technology doesn't work, and we can talk about technology. But for me, I think if, if a person has the ability to participate in the meeting, it shouldn't slow down the process of doing the city's business, just because somebody's not going to be here. And, and I think there have been times in the past, and I'm not saying this is what's happening now, but I do think there have been times in the past where not being in a meeting was a strategy to avoid getting something done. It used to drive Gary Paty crazy. done, it used to drive Gary Pat Paye crazy, where he would feel like he was being stalled, you know, I'm not going to be here, so don't take action on it, whether that is indeed true or not, that was at least the perception, that that was going on. I think we need to clarify things so that that perception, right or wrong, doesn't need to be there anymore, we're now clear on what it is. I think if a councillor is, cannot participate, for whatever reason, I mean, if there's legitimate reason they cannot participate, then they can make a legitimate request to delay a decision, if it is within the power of a councillor to participate, and they're just choosing not to participate, I worry that that really is not in the best interest of the city doing its business, we need to do our business and not just accommodate somebody's, oh, well, I just didn't want to talk on the phone, or I didn't want to be there, or I was going to have a dinner, so to me, it's, it's, that's, that's my principal interest.
Alan, and then Andrea.
The reason I put one of this on this process session was to avoid actually trying to second guess what the motivation is of, of a councillor, I, I think it should be more of a hard and fast rule that says if a councillor isn't going to be at the meeting and they request a postponement, that we should grant that, with the caveat that unless it goes into that realm of somebody's trying to stall it or something like that, I don't think it serves us very well to try to second guess whether or not they were, what the, what the reason they're not at the meeting is, in a particular instance, it wasn't, it wasn't my instance, but we didn't know what the rationale was behind it, and so we, the majority decided to move forward on the item, and I thought that was very inappropriate. And so I think it should be more of a hard and fast rule with, with an ability to override it, but with knowledge, not just second guessing.
Andrea, then Betty.
Well, I think that there's two different situations here, if we're doing council business and we're asking for something to be postponed, we should know in plenty of time that we're not going to be there, and I know the last time I traveled, I had tried to make arrangements to have, to have the mayor review the agenda and to, like, look to see if it was something that I needed to be here for, things got put on there and I was not happy, I got over it, it's okay, but I think that if we're doing council business, that should be treated differently than, you know, and like, if something happens bad in your family, that kind of like, you know, as Nolan Boyd, you know, we all have families, we all have to have a commitment to family here, we are part of a big family, the city of Eugene, and if something bad happens to the staff person, I expect them to take care of themselves first, and if they need to delay something because of that, that's okay with me, unless it's like something legal that needs to be done tomorrow and we are voting tonight, I think that that's one situation, but I think if we're doing council business and we ask to have it checked out, I think we should know in plenty of time whether we're going to be there or not, and then the third piece would be like if we're going somewhere or something different happens, that we're not, that's not council business, and then it's, you know, I'm not going to say luxury, but that we're taking time for our families in, in not a critical sense, then I think that that should be dealt with in a different way, and so I think really, the thing is that we need to give people the opportunity to, to look ahead and to plan and to see if they're going to be available or not, and then outside of those emergent situations, I think that that should be handled differently if they ask us to postpone something, like if there's a death in the family and they have to travel, or a child or something like that, I think that those are different things, I wouldn't want people to be here if they feel they need to be someplace else. So I'm, I'm comfortable with kind of the way we do it now, but I really think that we don't know what anybody's motivation is on that part, you know, and I try and be open and honest, and I think pretty much most of my peers are, so I don't think that there's any hidden, hidden agendas into doing that, and so, I don't know, I think it kind of works now, but I would like to see us be able to kind of differentiate the requests from council business, personal emergencies, and then just personal requests.
I've got Betty and George polling in the queue, I just wanted to say that from my perspective, I think it would be helpful if we handled it a little bit more like we do council polling, that we actually have a, either on, on the, the computer or whatever, but a, but a formal app, you know, just a thing that you fill out and say, I'm requesting, and then you know that you formally put it in, and you get an I got it answer, so you know that you've been, it hasn't fallen off of anybody's desk, that it, that you will get a, a response, so you've got the, it's come in and it's gone, and it's come back out, and I think it doesn't matter what the reasons are, that's my, Betty.
Well, I sort of think reasons matter, but I think that it's just a matter of courtesy if someone can't be there to postpone a vote, unless it's an urgent vote, most things, most things aren't that urgent, I know, well, the time that I had requested, I was on an airplane at the time you voted, and I listened to the thing later, and someone said she should, could have called in, but, and also, if I were, if you are on the east coast and the meeting starts here at 7:30, really starts at 8, and it's 11, I, I don't know if we should expect people to call in if they have to go to another meeting at 6:00 in the morning, our time, it's, and another thing, I, I know you think this isn't, isn't important, or some people do, but the equipment, the last time I used it was horrible, it was torture to try to listen to that, it, you couldn't hear either way, and I remember the time Gary Pat Paye called in, and it was so noisy that it was driving us all crazy, and
A lot of improvements in sound.
And we asked him to sign off finally, because he couldn't help it, but it was, it was really bad, so I don't, I, I think when we can, and I think we should ask ahead of time, unless, if somebody dies, or if you break your leg, that's probably an excuse for one day or two or something, but it should be, ask ahead of time, there should be good reasons.
George polling.
Then you have no say in it.
Well, I kind of agree with some of what's been said, and I disagree also, you know, it would be nice if we could handle it as a courtesy, fortunately, this council hasn't done it, this current council hasn't done it, but in the past, it's been downright discourteous on some of the requests that have been made and the denials, we've, I think, grown beyond that, so, you know, maybe we can still keep the courtesy part in there. The council business, I'm, you know, I can understand if you're sent to a seminar, or training, or something of that nature while attending council, attending to council business, you know, that should be almost an automatic, okay, we'll, we'll hold off any votes. My concern is, you know, our agendas sometimes are kind of a moving target, and we never know, so we may be planning a vacation, or in my case, a hunting trip, or the technology doesn't exist because I'm too far out of range, excuse me, and there's a change in the agenda, how we, first of all, if we're out of town, going to find out, and two, you know, it's not fair that we're not able to take part in that, because when we left town, that, that item wasn't on the agenda, same way with some last minute motions that come up after you leave town on a personal trip, if a motion, a councillor comes up, because technically we can put a motion out at any time, that's not fair again, because when you left town, there, there wasn't any discussion about X, Y, and Z, but now that you're out of town, it's thrown under the table. You know, in the emergency situations, yeah, I agree, that if, if you have an emergency where you have to leave town, you know, just out of respect, I think that would be inappropriate, so, it sounds like everybody's all over the map on this one, so you can look at it.
Chris.
Yeah, this is really, this is really good, I mean, wherever the body wants to go is fine, I mean, to me, the interest was having the conversation about it and arriving at some sort of clarity on it, because to me, it was relatively unclear. I was the one that, that said that I thought Betty could have called in, because I thought that was the information I had at the time, discovering that she couldn't have called in created a conflict for me, which is why I thought it was important to talk about this, so, so that was actually where that came from. To me, what I want to do is, is have something clear, whichever, whichever way it goes, I agree with Alan, we can't guess intent, I don't know what intent is, so you have to try to create a policy that deals with the situ, with the reality, all I, all I really want to do is make sure that we eliminate the potential for abuse, intentional or unintentional abuse of absence, George just raised a good one, what if somebody decides, because somebody's not here, to pop something on the agenda for a quick vote because they know they've got the votes to do it? Legally, they can do it, but it's unethical, no, I don't think it's ethical, others may think it is, and so I think we need to have some safeguards in place to be able to allow people to travel, to be able to allow folks to delay votes, and, and I would like to be able to have that ability, as much of a courtesy as possible, but it needs to be refined to the point where there's no ambiguity around when you do or don't do it, and also you can reduce the potential for abuse, not by anybody at this table right now, but in five years, who knows, who might be sitting at this table and might want to abuse it.
I've got Alan and Mike and George pulling in the queue, and I just want to say that when you talk about this and you come back with some kind of proposal, there are some legal parameters around what people's rights are as councillors that you can't take away from them, so you can have your intention, and you can have your courtesies and all of that, and that's, and, but still, people have their ability to, to make a decision not to, not to adhere to those under certain circumstances they choose to, so that, so that's just the, you know, Alan.
But legal and ethics are two different things.
Well, I would just say, in a sense, that's, that may be unfair too, because if it's, if it's legal for you to do something, then when you do it, it doesn't mean it's unethical, it may mean that it's not courteous, I mean, we're not going to argue with you.
Yeah, that'll be a debate for another time, we'll have to hear it.
Alan.
Intend lawyer jokes just popped in my head.
Yes, exactly.
I, I, I don't think we should actually try to guess intent, I think it should, I think that, just hearing this conversation makes me, makes, reaffirms that for me, I mean, guessing why someone's not going to be there, I don't, I think it should be, that we should all pledge that we're not going to abuse the system, and that if we're requesting a, a postponement of a decision, that it be granted unless it's a time sensitive one, if it's a time sensitive one that has a deadline on it, and say, you know, like, we have to make the decision on this grant because it has to go in the next day, you can't say, I don't like the grant, so I'm going to postpone it until after the deadline, so therefore it kills it, that type of stuff is inappropriate and, and tough, and, and there's a whole bunch of these issues like George is bringing up about, you know, how things can change on a, on a daily basis, I just went through and took the latest calendar and went back and I changed about 10 meeting headlines in my calendar about what we were doing on that day, so it changes quite a bit, so, and, but our lives are so complicated, we have to plan pretty far ahead in order to do that, to, to make it all work, so I don't think we should be guessing, I think it should be kind of a blanket rule, and we pledge not to abuse it, but if, if we need to override it because of time sensitivity or deadlines, then we do that, and it should be, I, I agree with the mayor, that should be a little bit more formal, that you, you know, you don't just, that you put in some kind of form or an email or some kind of
Help, would help all of us, I think.
Written request would probably be a good idea.
Mike.
I'm channeling Bob Chadwick here a little bit, I, I find myself agreeing with Alan. I would like to see us, first of all, the mechanism exists to correct this, the simple matter is, if the majority decides to push ahead with something, or the remaining majority in the absence of a councillor who may have voted in the opposite direction, one other councillor may vote in the affirmative and bring it up for reconsideration at the next meeting, and when the numbers are there, so the mechanism exists to correct the actual harm, but in the interest of creating greater working relationships amongst ourselves, I, I'm not sure I want to bind the hands of some future councillor who may look at this differently.
Can't.
But I would like to see us operate from the process that we won't question the intent of someone else, we'll give them the benefit of the doubt, if somebody asks, even if I violently disagree with them, I, I won't, if they, if they ask, don't do this, then we don't do it, I'd like to see us do that by simple request, we just agree that we're not going to bring up something that, until the full body has the capacity to deliberate, so.
George polling.
Well, I agree with Alan as far as time sensitive or deadline votes, as well as a real emergency to the city business, you know, something came up where we had to authorize a expenditure of $100,000 to do something to save the water main, whatever the case may be, some, some, something like that, I agree with that, that that would, definitely would override any request. Mike just brought up a point about bringing up a vote at the next meeting, is that, doesn't that, can't you only do that if there's new information, is that?
Mike's talking about a motion to reconsider, so if you take a vote at this meeting, somebody in the affirmative at the very next meeting can move to reconsider.
Somebody on the prevailing side can only bring it up.
So you got to change your vote, you got to
And it's the next meeting, only next meeting.
There's no, what's the word I'm looking for?
It doesn't require new evidence, new information, they can bring it up simply because they thought more about it and changed their mind.
Okay, all right.
Or because, I think, I think Mike, it may have been saying this, that the person's really an opponent, but they want the opportunity to bring it up, and so they say, I'm going to vote for this, so that at the very next meeting, when George is back in town, I can move to reconsider.
So I was, I thought it had to be based on some new, new evidence or new information to bring up the vote to reconsider.
Not move.
And then if it was done on a, on a Monday night, in the next meeting, we have, on Wednesday, we have a work session, if the person's still out of town, they miss the opportunity to bring it up at the next meeting, or could they bring up a, to reconsider then table? I, I don't know what the, I'm, I'm just trying to play out all the possibilities to see.
Somebody on the prevailing side could move to reconsider, and then if that passes and the council agrees, table it until everybody's back.
All right, thank you.
So I just want to bring up one more thought for you as you listen and bring back proposals for us to approve or disapprove, there are some times when maybe two or three of you in a row are going to be, with good reason, gone, and don't want something moved on, and you've got something that is not time sensitive to the extent that missing it will cause you to miss a grant or something, but it may mean putting off something that you're trying to move along process wise for over a month or something, because you've got in a row several councillors missing who each request that they don't want you to be dealing with something, so you can get caught in a place where you really feel for the, for the, I guess we can make this case to you and you can decide for yourself, but I just want to say it's not, sometimes it's not as black and white as it seems, because you can have sort of an accumulation where you could hold up a whole sort of process that you're trying to move along for an extended period of time, so I'm not asking for, you know, thumbs up or, I'm just want to bring that to your, that that can occur, and it can, it can bollocks up how you're trying to move things through
Sequentially.
Sequentially, yeah, right, okay, I think we're not going to get to anything else today, but I, that was, those were good conversations, yes, yes.
Can I just ask a question about the third item, Kelly, is this what is now in place, or was this for our discussion?
Both, so, we talked amongst staff about how it happens when we get inquiries and complaints via mail or walk-in, and that's what we outlined as a flow chart, so that's how it should be happening in those instances, and then we wanted to provide it to aid the discussion today, but we can get to that. Process session.
Okay.
Would it be helpful to?
I just want to make one comment, and just make sure that when city staff follows up, that they also follow up with the councillor.
Okay, that'll be the first one on our next scheduled process meeting.
Yes.
Okay, well, we're going to schedule it.
Which I will.
And actually, actually Alan has requested that we try to get that in before council breaks, so we'll try to look for a place to do that.
Where are you going?
All right, I'm going to call this meeting to a close.
No, it's him.
And as you know, we are going to now have a welcome reception for Roger Gray, the Eugene Water and Electric Board General Manager, going to close the council meeting and let the, let the party begin, so to speak, so, we are so glad to have him here.
Sandy, refresh.